All right, we'll call to order the March 1, 2022, meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we could start out with a roll call, please.
All right. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Mr. Respento. Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Broadhead. Ms. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Cronteras. And Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Okay, earlier this week, I think everyone received the minutes from the February 1 meeting. Did anyone have a chance, everyone have a chance, to review those? And if so, any concerns, proposed edits, et cetera? They look good to me, but anyone else have any, anything to add or change?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Who, I'm sorry, who made the second?
Mr. Harwell.
Mr. Harwell, all right, thank you. All right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, communications from the chairman, I have none, from vice chairman, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, let's go on to old business. The only old case we have is RZ 22-01-01. The applicant is LMS Brookwood Property, and it relates to 3975 Asbury Road. Okay? Mr. Galloway, if you'd just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, may it please the commission, Frank Galloway III. I represent the applicant. My address is 2200 Woodcrest Place, Suite 310, Birmingham, Alabama 35209.
Okay. All right, if you could just tell us about your case.
Thank you. This is a requested rezoning from an existing R5 to an R6. This is the Brookwood Apartments, which is on the west side of Highway 31 towards the city of Homewood from the Y, Shades Valley Y. And presently, there are 274 apartment units on the property. The request is not, may I repeat, not to increase the number of apartments, rather, the request is to change the zoning to an R6 with, tied to the design plan, so that, and actually, the opposite is true, there may not be an increase in apartments if the requested rezoning is granted. The property has been recently purchased, and the new owner seeks to accomplish a redo to the tune of about $15 million. And to do that, the financing scrutiny has triggered this, this request, because if, if there is an event where there is a casualty, be it fire, tornado, like what hit Tuscaloosa, you know, 10, 10-plus years ago, the ability to rebuild is something that the lender wants, and frankly, is going to require. And so what we seek to do is basically say, we're going to have the same development, spruced up, cleaned up, we'll have a state-of-the-art equipment and workout facility that is not present, but there will be no new units. And we think it will be a great addition to the city, but based on the, the fact that right now, we have 274 units, which exceeds the maximum density that R5 allows, we are non-conforming on, in certain aspects, the use is conforming, but the capacity is not. And so we seek to rezone it, cap it, and be assured that if, you know, heaven forbid, some casualty occurred, we would be able to put back on there what is there presently and what will be there a new $15 million later.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone wants to come forward to speak to this case, this is your time to do so. Okay, in seeing none, we will close the public portion of the hearing, and Mr. Galloway, if you answer any questions the board, the commission may have.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, just want to acknowledge that I'm an owner in this building, somewhere accused myself from long discussion or votes.
Okay. Ms. Galloway, when were these apartments initially built?
1969, which would have predated the, the Homewood High School. I mean, it's, you know, it's a different world now, and so they were probably state-of-the-art back then, and I, but it's just, it is, it is an occasion for these to really be upgraded as to the, the higher-end type of apartments that we're seeing young 20s to 30s living in, and also people who change in life and may have gone through divorce, or work change, or family change, that need, would like a nice place to live in an apartment community.
What's the disparity in the number of units you have and the number that are allowed?
Um, I would ask Mr. Goodwin to help me with that. It is under, future zero, current, though, is, we're at 274. Let me see, we've got that chart here, so bear with me.
Is it a square footage issue, or is, and there, there's a parking capacity issue also, so bear with me.
Presently, we're deficient in 98 spaces. We are deficient on setbacks for the, under present accumulative amount on the rear setback. We have a lot with issue. We have, there's a minimum, there's also a, I'm, I'm trying to get to your question, but I'm sorry, I'm going through the laundry list. We have one studio apartment, which is 400 square feet, and the minimum living areas, the dwelling unit, is 700 square feet, so we would have, we have one unit that does not comply with that. We have 103 one-bedrooms, which are like 780 square feet, so 273 out of 274 meet the standard, one does not, and that would be addressed by virtue of the design plan. But frankly, I apologize, I do not have that exact number. I think we're, it's in the, the mid-double digits that we're, it's not a touch foul of being two units over.
No, and I get, I mean, regardless, the banking requirement is what you face, even if it were, so I was just curious, I didn't intend for it to be.
I've run across this, my, my father was city attorney in, in Mountain Brook for a number of years, and this first came to me as a young lawyer, he was pointing out the apartments, the Redmond Apartments behind where Wanda June used to be, only allow 52 units, but they have 200 units. And so that density is so beyond what is allowed, that is why that's never been redone, because they just stay what they are, unlike this property being redone, because the density is so beneficial to the owner, they'll let it stay post-World War II, red brick, no dishwasher, you know, because they get so much out of the density, it's not worth it to remodel, which is not the case here.
Right. Mr. Goodwin, by my math, it's 2,500 square feet per unit, I believe is what the zoning, the current zoning is, which would be about 16 units. Would be the shortfall. And you've got, it's, it's not even necessarily the total loss, cat loss, on a, on a insurance claim, but even a partial loss, that you're still going to have issues with your claim, with your financing, with everything else that's.
Correct, you could have a lightning strike on one, or you could have, you know, somebody who has a heart attack, or a health event, and plows through a building with a car, you know, one's imagination can go pretty rampant, but site instances where quirky things happen. And this is just a, it's a good way to clean it up, that is, A, beneficial to the owner, but I would contend, it is frankly more beneficial to the city, because it cedes control of number and design to the city willingly by the owner, which is something that probably not a lot of apartment owners are forthcoming to do in Homewood, or, or most anywhere, truthfully.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious at this investment, with the units that aren't being renovated, just curious, from a rental rate perspective, like, what the increase would be there overall?
I do, I, that's a good, it's a very fair question, I do not know. It, the, I will tell, there was an interesting article I saw, that would address, that would speak to this, but not with the exact numbers, that it is, in Birmingham, Alabama, is one of the three prime cities in the country where it is cheaper to buy a house, and make a mortgage payment for a two-bedroom house by over $500 a month than it is to rent a comparable apartment. So hopefully, this would help address, you know, the, the, the volume issue for young folks trying to get started, you know, and not live at home, and live in a safe, you know, area. And hopefully, also patronize the Homewood businesses, and, you know, maybe buy houses in Homewood down the road, too.
If there are any, aren't any further questions, I would entertain a motion.
Just for clarification purposes, as commissioners are aware, the requested rezoning is associated with a development plan that is, has been presented and is included as part of this. So this, it's a requirement of the zoning orders to include a development plan under R6. And the development plan, as I say, meets all city requirements, and, so that the action before the planning commission tonight is to recommend the rezoning to an R6, which would include that development plan, which would be then forwarded to City Council. Just for clarification, that's sort of like a two parts, the development plan and the requested rezoning, so.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, for clarification, Fred? R7 versus R6? So, why the pursuit of R6 versus R7?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear.
I was just wanting to ask, the size of it, why R6 and not R7, just for my own clarification?
Yeah, I, I think it has more to do with the, with the, sort of, the recognition that's an existing condition, situation, and that the development plan can address those existing conditions and be, and, and yet bring it into more into conformity than R5.
Townhouse is a thing.
I think that's the intention.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve. Is that the proper motion at this point, to approve?
Yes.
Okay. I would make that motion.
Mr. Harwell, okay. All right. Ms. Wilcutt.
Yes.
Mr. Armstead.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andrus.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your rezon request will go to the City Council with a 5-0 recommendation, a favorable recommendation.
Super, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too.
All right, so our first new matter tonight is, make sure I've got these right, or, okay, it's a final development plan approval request by Rohrer Aesthetics. The, the address is 105 Citation Court. If, the case number is FD 22-03-01. Whoever is presenting on this case, if you would please come forward. And gentlemen, as you get up here, if you would write your name and address on the, on the sheet there, and then, and then share that with us verbally as well.
No, there's not.
I missed a bit of them. Exactly.
All right, same, same question, now that you have the sheet.
What would you like, name?
Name and address, please.
That's funny.
Okay, if you would state your name for the record, and then tell us about your case.
My name is Brian Pressnell with Pressnell Engineering, address 1703 McConnell Lane, Mount Olive, Alabama 35117. This is Christopher Baggett.
Christopher Baggett, 71 Longview Circle, Alabaster, Alabama 3507. I'm with Eminem Builders.
Okay, thank you.
What we are presenting is a, a development plan that would allow some additional buildings to be constructed on a property that already has one single building. This would consist of a 2,800-square-foot office building with an attached 4,000-square-foot warehouse. In addition to that, it would just be some additional concrete paving around the south and on the, or on the west and the south end of, of the building.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to speak to this case, this is your opportunity. Okay, does not appear anyone is coming forward, so we will keep you guys up here, and if you would please answer any question the commission members have. I guess one of the questions I had is on the, on the concrete that you're pouring, I can't even see the directions, but on the, the right side of the drawing, what is the concrete, is, is that going to be additional parking, or what is the, it doesn't look like, look like it, but.
It's more for truck movements, right? Yeah, more, more for just truck movements coming in and out. I think they have mostly box trucks.
Yeah.
It's not large tractor trailers to access their warehouse.
Okay.
He needs to get them all the way around, and the way it is now, they have trouble going in and then coming back out the other way, it's just really.
Yeah, this, this would create a loop around the buildings.
Okay, I see, yeah, you're going, going all the way around, I see that now. Thank you.
I wanted to ask if there were going to be any issues as far as, like, tree removals, and any impervious surface issues for stormwater runoff, any of that? Is that all been met?
Well, yeah, there's, there is a large, if you've had a chance to look at your, the aerial photos, there's a large stand of trees to the south of the property, and provisions are included on that development plan to, to allow for that, for some of those to remain as a buffer between the properties further to the south. Additionally, as you pointed out, the large number of concrete there, there are going to be provisions for a stormwater detention area. I'm not sure if it's been decided to be above ground or underground yet, but, but the applicants are aware of the need to provide that.
And we'll review the, the engineering drawings before they get a building permit.
And then as far as aesthetics go, it looks like it matches the existing building, as far as the windows and the.
It does. It mimics the other building almost exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. How many, how many employees do you guys have? Do they have?
He doesn't have a lot, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, maybe he's got six or seven in there.
Okay.
He doesn't have a big, big operation.
I guess the reason I ask that is, your parking requirement is correct on the development plan, but it doesn't, it doesn't show how many employees there are. So, just an acknowledgement of that, you know, eight employees, or, I mean, you've got 12 spaces, so 12 employees would, would be helpful, I think, for the future.
I can't answer that question.
Right, yeah, yeah, and that's fine, and that would just be something you can just add.
But we'll make sure that we meet that.
Before it gets executed, right.
Yeah, we'll have to get, and make sure.
Okay, any, any further questions?
Motion to approve FD 22-03-01.
Second.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Armstead.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andrus.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your development plan is approved, 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so final, well, not a final matter, but the final new case is FD 22-03-02. The development is Stewart Lubricants and Services. The applicant is John Jett, and this relates to 144 Citation Court. Whoever is here to present on this case, if you'd come forward, please.
Yes, I'm John Jett with Shoal Engineering, representing the client, Stewart Lubricants, on the final development plan approval.
If you could just summarize what you're, what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, there's an existing building on site today, and the client is looking to expand roughly, approximately 20,000 square feet for additional storage and services that they provide. We have already submitted our engineering plans that accommodate the stormwater management and existing, the parking, associated parking and truck maneuverability across the site.
Okay, thanks. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this case, please come forward now.
My name is Richard Darden, and we have the property to the south of this property, and I'm here just for informational purpose. If there's been a hydrology study, we would like to be aware of that, and had understood there is a detention pond of some sort in consonance with the structure, and we would like to know what the effect will be on the downstream, and that's all I'm here for.
Mr. Darden, could I request you sign your name and your address on that?
All right.
Thank you.
Can you send that directly?
Sure.
Okay, so we're not, so we're not involved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Jett, you just heard Mr. Gordon's question about water, water retention, water hydrology studies. I believe, Mr. Smith, it's indicated earlier that's something that had already been submitted?
Right, they've.
Yeah.
They've submitted, they've submitted engineering plans and hydrology study, but I would ask Mr. Jett to send it directly to the adjacent property owner.
Yes, we can.
It's not typically something we share.
Okay.
We can email it to Mr. Darden.
Is, is it compliant with the existing zoning?
Yeah.
Water retention?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By the way, there's a problem. The drainage is a problem.
Can you tell us just a little bit about what, what the plan is for dealing with water?
Yes, so there, there is an existing issue that is occurring there on property that is downstream, so we have modeled the storm, you know, all storm events to, to manage each of the storm events and prevent any downs, increasing queues downstream, and also any adjacent properties from being affected. But yes, to Mr. Darden's point, there is, and there is some, there's a, a smaller diameter pipe that is downstream, that is off the, off the, this current property's owner, the Stewart Lubricants property, that, I think that's what Mr. Darden is speaking of. And so, there's also a recent rain event that occurred, maybe the summer, last summer, that had a collapsed pipe, and part of our, part of our proposal in the project is to repair the damaged pipe and, and put a headwall on the end of the pipe to hopefully increase to help to any issues that we can on the property.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think I said this, but the public portion is closed, so, a little too late, but, all right. Any other questions?
Yeah, are we concerned about this, from an engineering standpoint, Kale? Does that, sounds like there's a lot up in the air, or sort of?
What do you mean up in the air?
Well, if we're impacting currently downstream.
Right, so part of the project is to fix the problem.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm reading this right, it adds some detention ponds.
Right, yes, yes.
To make the condition improve.
Can I ask if he's comfortable with this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
If, if I may, Mr. Jett, is this correct, this, have, have you cleared that much of the trees that were on there, in this image?
Yes, sir, clearing has been, has begun.
That's fairly extensive, isn't it? I mean, it didn't look like your addition's going to reach as far south as that, why did you?
There, the, the property is going to be pretty much regraded, all, all aspects, from property line to property line are pretty much going to have some impact.
Do you anticipate any new landscaping of any sort on that?
Yes, sir, we have provided a landscape plan for approval, and so back there, so to, to speak to your point there, on the southwest corner, that's where an existing stormwater pipe, and the, the property actually serves, since that, that pipe is undersized today on the southwest corner, their property actually serves as a detention pond for the entire basin, the entire basin that comes to that point, off-site drainage, and we are, so that area right there is going to, to serve as the storage for the off-site drainage.
Yeah, it just, compared to an earlier photograph, it seemed extreme, the amount of trees that were taken down.
Yes, sir, but there, there's regrading and sloping and, and everything, there's walls going to be put in to, to store the water.
And Fred, in terms of the, the development plan itself, and the specifications in there, everything we, we would need, in terms of details and building heights and setbacks and everything, is in there?
Yes, yes, yeah.
What's the age of the building, the current building?
I can roughly guess, I, I want to say from, it's either built in the late 80s or early 90s, I'm not 100% sure.
And it's, I mean, you assume it's the original building, there's, hadn't any changes to the building as far as what's?
I would imagine, I don't really have prior history.
Right, I'm just thinking aloud, in terms of the, whatever situation is there now isn't, isn't new, right, the, whatever, other than the fact that there might be storms that have been more intense, or?
The issue was also could be downstream effects on, upon the pipe that caused this condition, so damaged pipe, debris, other, other items like that could cost flooding. So damaged pipe, debris, other items like that can cause flooding.
That are being addressed with the project?
A portion. I mean, just on what's on our property and to repair a slight damage, but downstream...
What you can control.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Just so you know, and Mr. Darden and I looked at this last summer. Here in the corner of the property is... Captures a lot of water coming from this direction and this direction. And the invert and the entire pipe actually was corrugated metal and it collapsed. And what they proposed to do is build back a headwall that accepts that water. What was happening was the pipe had collapsed, and it was just eroding a gray hill of the slope on Mr. Darden's property. So they're fixing all of that as part of this project.
The applicant didn't cause that to happen, right? That's just a result of the age of the...
Right. That's right. I mean, it wasn't intentional. It was just that this pipe was never really... It was never really clear whose property it was owned and whose responsibility it was to maintain.
Right. Thank you.
Can you talk to the landscaping plan again? I know Fred asked you about clearing some trees. Can you talk a little bit about what the landscaping plan is?
Yes. And I'm a civil engineer, and so we had a landscape architect put together the plan. And it was to the city's new zoning requirement, or new...
New tree ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so they submitted it, and we've received comments back, and we're currently addressing those comments.
Yeah, I did see that, but I hope he can go into detail on... Because I can't read that.
There are the parking count information down on the lower right-hand side citing the number of available spaces right now, and they're adding 10 additional spaces, so which will be more than enough to handle the 35 employees at the facility. So they have addressed that.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve FD 220302.
Mr. Second.
All right. Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Andres?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, your plan is approved. Thank you. Okay. Last item on our agenda is a request for us to consider amending the zoning ordinance to add the new sign and fence ordinance. We're not... My understanding is we're not quite ready to address that this week, sorry, at this meeting, so it's going to be carried over to next month. So nothing further to do on that one. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Mariposa. Happy Mariposa.